Little gavel. Good afternoon. This is Michael Marks, Chairman of the Apex Planning Board. This is the follow-on meeting to the Planning Board's remote meeting held on Monday, January 11th, 2021, that allowed for additional public input on the four public hearing cases. Any comments for these cases received 24 hours after the close of the meeting on Monday will be read during the specific cases. Attendance at today's meeting will be taken via roll call, so when I call your name, please respond to confirm that you are in attendance. So Michael Marks is here. Reggie Skinner.
Present.
Mark Steele.
Present.
Tina Sherman.
Here.
Okay. Tommy Pate.
Here.
Tim Royal.
Present.
Keith Braswell. Jeff Hastings. And Ryan Akers.
Present.
Okay, so all voting board members are in attendance. As a reminder, members of the public who have called into today are in listen-only mode. I'm just going to go over the message to the planning board. You guys probably have already have this, but just to make sure. So while presentations are occurring by staff, we'll mute all lines except for the presenter to help with audio quality. When we get to discussions and questions, the Chair will indicate that the floor is open for these comments and discussion. At any time, you can raise your hand if you have video turned on or unmute yourself to ask a question. The chat box should not be used for any discussion on any items during the meeting and only be used for help with any technical difficulties. When you do come off mute or wave your hand, please state your name and when you do unmute and make a comment or when and when you before you start again before you you when you come off of mute, please state your name before you make any comment or ask a question so that the group knows who's speaking and that the minutes may be documented correctly. But please remember to mute yourself once you are done speaking. If a voting member does log off, we'll pause briefly to allow them time to get back in and get back into the meeting. And then to the public who is listening, public comments received via email and voicemail by 7:00 PM Tuesday will be read into record during the appropriate time during the meeting. And full copies will be attached to the meeting minutes. If you missed the Planning Board comment deadline of 7:00 PM on yesterday, you can still use the same email or voicemail to provide comments to Town Council up until Monday, January 25th, 2021. So to allow Shannon Cox to be able to join the meeting and ask, answer any questions on the affordable housing plan, which was item number one. I will move item number one to the end of the list and we will start with item number two. So Sarah, this is discussion and possible motion regarding rezoning case 20CZ11, the Roberts Road property pud. So I don't know, Sarah, if you want to just give a quick summary and then were there additional comments received from the public that you want to read into the meeting minutes?
Yes. Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to zoom into the aerial for, this will be slide number 26 for purposes of discussion. If at any point Planning Board members, if you would like for me to switch to another slide, let me know and I'll be happy to do so. First, I am going to read over the conditions that were additional conditions or changes that were presented at Monday night's, yes, Monday's meeting from the applicant. So there are five. The first is the maximum residential density for the project will be reduced to 3.2 units per acre with a maximum of 25 single-family homes and eight townhomes. This amounts to a maximum yield of 33 total residential units down from the original proposal of 50 residential units with a maximum of 40 single-family homes and 10 townhomes. Number two, the following condition is being added. The location of the temporary gravel construction entrance shall be limited to. Pardon me?
I think Patrick just joined. Yeah, sorry, continue. I think you just got cut off for a second.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to start rereading number two. The following condition is being added. The location of the temporary gravel construction entrance shall be limited to only provide construction access from Pollard Place to the east via Gartrill Way. And to cue you in here, we are, we are talking about the construction entrance in this, from this Pollard Place stub.
Okay, sorry about that. Continue.
Number three, the following condition is being removed. All single-family homes shall have a crawl space or have a raised foundation that a minimum rises at least 20 inches from average grade across the front of the house to the finished floor level at the front door. Number four, the builder condition that restricts the pud from being sold to a national builder has been revised to state the following. This project shall consist of lots developed with custom homes. Number five, the condition regarding pedestrian access to Roberts Road is being revised to say the following. The project shall provide pedestrian access from the future subdivision to Roberts Road via the eight-foot side path along Pollard Place and Gartrill Way unless a public street within the subdivision is constructed within 300 feet of the northwest property corner, in which case a direct pedestrian connection shall be made to Roberts Road consistent with UDO Section 754(c). That concludes the list of conditions revised and presented Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Next, I do have several emails that we have received since either since noon Friday, January 8th, and also in the 24 hours following the Planning Board on Monday. First and foremost, one of the items that we heard was the petition from Crestmont Neighborhood that was read into record in full on Monday. I failed to provide the number of signatures that were on that petition. So for the record, there were 66 signatures provided in that petition that was read in full on Monday. We have received a total of 17 additional emails. Rather than read all 17, I'm going to summarize. There are 16 that really hit on some similar issues, so I'm going to summarize those 16 and then I will move to the 17. So in regard to the first concern is January 11th Planning Board meeting. There was concern regarding being in listen-only mode and lack of interactive participation. We received one email regarding this and that was from the Crestmont Neighborhood. We also have lack of response to emails sent to the email address that is provided. There was one email regarding that and that was from the Crestmont Neighborhood. And also I did want to clarify on those, we did have four emails from the Crestmont Neighborhood regarding my failure to acknowledge the number of signatures in the petition. Next item, the overall project notice. Several neighbors state that they did not receive neighborhood meeting information and that the pud petition was submitted after the neighborhood meeting. There were seven from the Crestmont Neighborhood expressing that concern. There was concern that there's a lack of detailed information and have requested more time to review. We heard four emails regarding this from Crestmont. There was also a request to extend the public hearing timeline. We heard five emails regarding this, also from Crestmont. Concern with the list and participation of residents at the neighborhood meetings. A concern that the project is being rushed through the approval process and that the Pines Neighborhood is not represented. We have one email on those three points from Crestmont. There were concerns from the quality of life, notably the impact to children playing in the streets. We heard from one neighbor in the Pines Development that the Pollard Place Extension, an existing public road network to the east, the Sutton Point Development, we're talking in this area here. We heard from, we had six emails from Crestmont Neighborhood regarding concern of increased neighborhood and construction traffic. Takes me to my next point, traffic. Concerns of excessive and heavy traffic rather than normal traffic being routed through Crestmont. There were two concerns. An increase of high school traffic will utilize existing streets to access Roberts Road. We heard from three. There was questions posed. They are as follows. Will sales for new development drive on existing streets? Will golf carts be used and routed through existing streets? Has a traffic study been performed? Has emergency access and emergency situations been evaluated? We received one with these questions from Crestmont. And when I say that we have one email that those particular items were in one email, they may not all be the same email. Construction traffic. There were four emails supporting construction traffic through the Pines via Gartrill Way. There was one concern regarding interference with vehicles parked on the street. These are on existing streets. Questions where, where will construction traffic be routed? How will it be signed? Are there fines for violation? And we had two requests for signage, all of these coming from Crestmont. Continuing with traffic, Roberts Road access. We had one request for direct access to Roberts Road from the Pines and we had two requests for direct access to Roberts Road from Crestmont. We had six requests from Crestmont that access be routed or be provided rather through Gartrill Way through the Pines HOA and have asked if we have reached out to them. And I did want to point out, members of the Planning Board, that this area here, while it is owned by the Pines HOA, this is RCA. So that is, that is our resource conservation area and it is therefore preserved in perpetuity and not available for a right-of-way connection. And Pollard Place Extension, which is the discussion regarding these stub streets that exist and the future connectivity between those two. We had two emails from Crestmont acknowledging that this is, these are stub streets and are anticipated for future road development. We had one request from Crestmont to not extend Pollard Place from the west. And we had one request not to extend Pollard Place from the east from a resident in Old Mill Village. I'll provide more detail on that one following the summation. Pedestrian access. We had a few concerns. There was a request for a safe road crossing to the high school. We had two emails concerning that. And I did also want to let you know, Planning Board members and members of the public, there is a project already in place to provide a high-vis crossing along Roberts Road to provide a safe pedestrian crossing for connectivity to the high school. There was one email asking if there will be a greenway connection. Moving on to maximum lot yield, we heard from two emails in the Crestmont Neighborhood that support the reduction of total unit count because it will reduce overall traffic. We had one email asking from Crestmont, when will the total unit count be determined? Next, we move on to subdivision plans. We had one email from Crestmont, how will existing neighbors be able to provide input on the layout to comment on structure placement, construction noise, and pollution? Pricing. We had one email from Crestmont requesting the price points to protect property values. We had two emails from Crestmont stating that the varying square, square footage of single-family homes combined with townhome products will reduce housing values. We had one email from Crestmont concerning that custom-built product will not be able to protect existing property values. And we had two emails from Crestmont that there was a concern that this could be an affordable housing project. I suspect that it may be because this item followed the Affordable Housing Plan. The two were not related. And then moving on to the subject of trees, we heard from five residents in, or five emails rather, in Crestmont. There was a request for trees and evergreens to be planted for privacy along Stonehouse Drive along the western boundary of the project site. We had one email from the Crestmont Neighborhood concerning the health of existing trees and potential safety concerns and have requested to remove tall trees and replace and replant with smaller trees. That concludes my summation of the emails we received primarily from the Crestmont and the Pines Neighborhood. I have one email that I'm going to read into, in full into the record. This email is from Suzanne Mason, 329 Old Vill, excuse me, 329 Old Mill Village Drive, Apex 27502. Dear Apex Planning Board members, I am writing to oppose the rezoning case 20CZ11 Roberts Road Properties pud as proposed for the following reasons. One, the proposed extension of Pollard Place from Gartrill Way crosses a stream and stream buffer in the Jordan Lake Basin. This is shown on the map of page 63 of the pud application. Though perpendicular crossings of streams and riparian buffers are allowed when there is no practicable, reasonable alternative, there is such an alternative, extending Pollard Place from Stonehouse Drive to the interior of the property only and not connecting to Gartrill Way. This makes the development of an expansion of Crestmont and eliminates the need to cross the stream or further impact the buffer, which is important if water quality is to be preserved. Further, the placement of Gartrill Way stub seems to be the best fit for the Pines at Wake Crossing development, given the natural resources identified on their property only and without consideration to those present on the adjacent Roberts Road pud properties. If a holistic view had been taken, then the stub and alignment of Pollard Place could have been located higher up slope above the stream and even outside of any riparian buffer. Number two, it is indicated in Section 10, Item D, on page eight of the pud plan or page 60 of the pud application that $1,600 will be donated to a local nonprofit to offset the clearing of trees. Approximately 7.3 acres or 69% of the area currently has tree canopy and 1.6 acres are proposed to be preserved with an additional 0.8 proposed to be replanted, totaling 2.4 acres preserved or replanted. Therefore, dollars is proposed to offset approximately 4.9 acres of tree removal, which is a about $326 per of tree loss. However, the source of information and assumptions used in the assigned per-tree value calculation are not provided. Therefore, whether this is an appropriate amount cannot be determined from the information provided. Thank you for your time and consideration. This concludes the additional emails that I'm going to read. I would like to now cue it that we have received a voicemail. If they are able to play that for the record, that would be great. If not, I'm prepared.
Good evening. This is Minajil Sundaramanathan, 342 Stonehouse Drive, Apex, NC 27523. This is regarding rezoning case 20CZ11. I would like to express my concerns regarding this. We did not receive any communication from the town about the earlier meeting that happened in September and October. The only letter we got was the meeting in Jan. And when we attended the call, we were all muted. We were not allowed to express our concerns. I also sent an email. Because there was no communication and proper representation from Crestmont as well as Pines communities, the town should consider resending all the details or information about the new development to all of the owners who are affected. Call for a meeting, hear their concerns, and then do the auditing process. Above all, the biggest concern is our community will become a transit whenever the Roberts Road and Green Level Road gets choked because of the school and probably a gas station that is in the plan. Unfortunately, we will be, we will become a true cut-through traffic, so cut-through for most of the traffic. And people who want to go from Green Level to Roberts will use our community. Hence, we'll be a highway and not the town planned roads, what it is intended for. Hence, I would strongly recommend the town to consider approving a direct entry for the new development into Roberts Road or reconsider the approval for a residential plan. Thank you, Minajil Sundaram.
Thank you. That concludes additional public comment we've received.
Okay, thank you very much, Sarah, for reading those and summarizing them. I guess we're ready to bring it to the board for discussion and possible motion. I had one question and just to get clarification. So when I read a lot of the emails, there did seem to be a lot of concern that there was no notification sent out to all the residents. So do we have confirmation that the notices were sent to both, for both neighborhood meetings and for the Planning Board meeting?
Yes, Mr. Marks. This is Sarah Van Everie. The applicant provided an affidavit that all property owners within 300 feet were sent invitations to the neighborhood meeting. Staff checked the list upon submittal and discovered one that was missing. And so the applicant invited that property owner to another neighborhood meeting. Staff sent out notices to all adjacent property owners for the Planning Board public hearing on December 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
So that was one of my comments. So I'm going to open up to the board. Please, when you come in, just state your name and any comments and or questions for, I think the applicant is on, Patrick is on as well. So if any additional questions for the, for the applicant, we can ask him as well.
This is Tina. I had a quick question for Sarah. I wanted to, as a follow-up to my question in regards to the changes that were proposed on Monday by the applicant. The way, the statement from Wake County Public Schools would, would not accurately reflect the changes. And I believe on Monday you said you might try to inquire if it would change the statement because the, the number of homes had been reduced. So I didn't know what, if we had any feedback from, from Wake County on that.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sherman. We did reach out to Wake County Public Schools and heard back from them quickly. This reduction would not have any, any impact or any change on that impact.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sure, thank you.
This is Mark Steele. Sarah, do you, do you expect that we're going to be getting that kind of notification on all the development applications for, for some time until they quote catch up?
So I can answer that one, Mr. Steele. This is Amanda Buntz. Last year, we started coordinating more closely with Wake County Public Schools and the council was supportive of that as well. And so beginning in the fall, we started for any new rezoning applications that include residential that are submitted. We are requesting this letter of impact from Wake County Public Schools. So there may be cases where there is capacity and others where there, there is not. So you will get a, a letter for any rezoning with residential development proposed.
Got it. So, so this is a change in process. It's not that these last two we saw on Monday are something totally different than what's happened in the past. It's that the process has changed.
It, the process has changed so that we can bring you that information as part, just information to have as part of the, as part of the staff report. And so, yes, nothing else has changed other than just incorporating that into our staff report.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
And may I, this is Tina. May I, may I interject that, yeah, I think part of some of the concerns that we have heard from the community are on school reassignments. And, you know, along with, you know, impact on roads and where students are, are having to travel to go to school if they're, you know, if they're unable to, to come in because they're neighborhood schools. So I'm grateful that the, the staff, you've incorporated this and that council was supportive. You know, just so we as a board and the community, or Town Council, the community at large, understand as we are evaluating new developments, the impact it's going to have on the families coming in and affecting the quality of life. I feel like it's a really important part of the conversation. So I appreciate that this is a new development. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. This is Ryan Akers. I do have a question. Is Russell Dalton on by chance?
I did not see him in the early login, so I'm not sure if he is here or not.
He, he was not planning to come tonight. He had other, this was not on his schedule, sorry.
Okay, that, that's okay. I was going to ask him some, some questions about the adjacent development Crestmont, but because I have some pretty in-depth knowledge on that development since I was the engineer of record, I'm just going to go out and, and put them out there. Number one, that street stub Pollard Place. The town of Apex requires that we post that with a future road extension signage right there where you're currently located. So I just wanted to acknowledge to the rest of the Planning Board members that that road is posted with an acknowledgement that there will be an extension. That was part of the requirement when we went through the engineering of that subdivision to meet the, the cross-access and the UDO requirement. So that's something to consider. The other thing that is, and maybe Russell would be better to this, or, or one of my other colleagues that has a traffic background. A lot of the concerns from the adjacent neighbors largely stem from cut-through traffic. But I'm pretty sure that Cobblestone Way, which is located on the far western side of Crestmont that steps into Green Level is a right-in, right-out with a median in Green Level road that prevents people from headed southbound on Green Level. So I, I, I think the concern of cut-through traffic is, it may be misplaced, but I don't want to insult the neighbors. I mean, they have a legitimate concern. It's just from an engineering perspective, I, I perceive that it's not going to be as, as bad as, as maybe being portrayed through the comments. That's just some of my perspective.
Yeah, this is Tommy, and I think this is something that Mark, Mark had brought up last, last meeting too. How if you're going south or whichever way you were going, you were going to take Gartrill Way. The only people cutting through to Cobbleton would be anybody, you could, if you were going north, you would cut that way maybe. But other than that, none of the other traffic would be doing that. So I, I agree. I think cut-through is not as much of a concern as people may be thinking.
Yeah, this is Mark. I did, I did a little Googling while we were talking about this on Monday and then I asked Russell that exact question. And he agreed with me that people heading east are going to go out on Gartrill. People heading south are going to go out on Gartrill and go down Parlier, is that's how you say it, a parlier. And then people that are going north probably would, would go out into Crestmont and then turn left and head off to the light. I don't see people cutting all the way through this whole development, coming on a cobblestone. It's just, it's just too much, too many turns, so.
It seems to me that there's a lot of discussion about cut-through traffic and the fact that there, there's, you know, a safety concern. But I'm going to put that right on its head and say that, you know, I, as an engineer, and I'm sure Tommy can, can collude with me on this. EMS and cross-access is, is the reason these ordinances in Apex is not unique. All of the local ordinances that are modern require cross-access. It's, it's something that creates safety within our community for EMS and it causes redundancy. I, I would not turn down a development within the town of Apex based on interconnectivity. And that's just my own personal point, so.
Yeah.
This is.
I'll take that into consideration.
I, I want to go back to the question the Chair asked about notification of. of, of, of the development and of, of the neighborhood meetings. I actually brought this up on Monday. I have a lot of concern that, that we receive such a large amount of, of input, both, you know, on Monday, emails and the petitions on Monday. And then again, tonight, and so little at the neighborhood meeting. And I, I don't know, you know, given where we are in this moment with COVID, I know things are, are different and a little more complicated. But I have a lot of concern that the neighbors don't feel like they're, that they had an opportunity to fully ask questions of, of the developer. There was a lot of appreciation. And actually so that the folks are listening, so that you know that the emails that were read, that we received a, a copy of those as well. So we, we've had an opportunity to fully review those. I know that Sarah just gave a summary, but so that everyone who's listening knows. There was a lot of appreciation for the engineers, a lot of the adjustments that were made. But I, I do wonder if, if there is another opportunity to, to, to have the member, have the community, the neighbors engage in a neighborhood level meeting to, 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 so they have more of that one-on-one with the, with the engineers and can have some more of their, their concerns addressed. I, I appreciate the, the, the adjustments that have been made thus far. I'm, I'm very pleased with them. But I, I, I am very concerned that the neighbors were not, and I, like I said, I raised this on Monday, we're, we're not there on Monday. I don't feel like, they feel as though their voice, their voice was heard at, you know, at that stage. Obviously they're, you know, they have now come before us and they have that opportunity to come before the, the, the full town council. But I feel like there was an opportunity missed here. And I'm going to put that blame on COVID and these, you know, strange times that we're living and, and getting together and how challenging that is. But I just wonder if there's another opportunity for, for some neighborhood engagement before this is voted on by the, the, by the planning board.
You know, Tina, I, I, you know, agree, it seems like there were a lot. But then the, the applicant has signed an affidavit that, you know, basically 600 mail or letters went out. I just can't believe that COVID held them all up and they, they were never delivered. It just doesn't seem possible. So I'm just wondering if they saw them and did not.
I guess I, on that point, and maybe Amanda or Sarah, you could answer this question. At master site plan or master subdivision plan, isn't a neighborhood meeting still required even though the, the board and the council does not actually see that case any longer?
That's correct. The applicant has the choice to hold a neighborhood meeting for rezoning and master subdivision plan together or do them separately. And Sarah may be able to confirm, I believe in this case, it, this, the neighborhood meeting was just for the rezoning. And if that's the case, then another neighborhood meeting will have to be held prior to submitting the master subdivision plan.
Yeah, that, this is Mark. That might be, I guess we can ask Tina if she thinks it's adequate. It seems adequate to me because a lot of the concerns we heard tonight, the ones on Monday seemed to be very repetitive. The ones tonight seem to be very detailed about the kinds of things that I think would come up at a master site plan, like trees. You know, the trees in the, in the eastern buffer, et cetera. So I don't know, I, I would, I would be more comfortable knowing what you just told us, Amanda. So the question is to Tina, are you still comfortable or you still?
Yes, I, I did not catch you ask that question, but thank you. And that, that does make me more comfortable. I just, again, want to make sure the neighbors have that opportunity. So that is, that is helpful, thank you.
Yeah. And then this is Mark, I want to say one more thing. The, clearly, I think we just have to do it as a given that Pollard's going to go through. That's, we talked about this at length on Monday. But the, the very last email that was read in that was, had more environmental concerns. If, if you did what that person was asking, you, you just, you just really exacerbated the concerns that the Crestmont people have. So, so I think that's a non-starter. I personally think that that's a non-starter. I, I don't think we can even consider having it run from the middle of the development west out to Crestmont only. I think that would make things worse.
This is Sarah Van Everie, if I can answer your question regarding the neighborhood meeting notification, it included the rezoning and subdivision.
So this is Diane Ken. So I'd like to let you know that just based on the way that the calendar is working, you could have this considered in February. The 30 days does not run out, so just mention that.
Thank you, Diane. Can I, Sarah, again, just to, to clarify, so, so the, the neighborhood and subdivision, the neighborhood and rezoning, the master subdivision and rezoning did run concurrently? Is that what I understood, so this, these meetings that did happen early in the, earlier in the fall were the only meetings that, that happened? Are scheduled to happen at the moment? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Based on the information submitted and provided by the applicant, yes.
This is, this is Patrick, this is the applicant, if I could interject really quick. Sarah, to be honest, I didn't even, I didn't even know that that was running concurrently. I have fully been anticipating having another neighborhood meeting for the master subdivision plan. In fact, I did at the end of last week, after receiving the first handful of emails from some of the neighbors, I did reach back out to those neighbors. And this was when, you know, we, we had conceded a couple of those conditions. I was just, I wanted them to know that they've been heard. And, you know, I, I pointed out the neighborhood meeting that we originally had, that we had sent out the notifications for. But in that email, I also let them know process wise that we would be having another neighborhood meeting before the master subdivision plan. And that would be a chance for them to provide any input that they might have or questions or concerns or et cetera on the actual subdivision design. So while we may have checked doing that concurrently, it, it may have been by accident. In which case, I'm, I'm willing to commit that there will be another neighborhood meeting for the subdivision. If we need to write that in as a condition, so be it. I'm not trying to get out of that by any means, especially knowing that there's been some concern over notification timing and whatnot. Our, the last thing we want is for there to be any negative feelings towards, you know, the amount of time that people had to review. We certainly feel like we've gone through the process the correct way. However, you know, again, more than willing to listen to the neighbors and to hear their concerns and to explain our side of things and provide help anywhere, anywhere that we can. So that's all.
Thanks, Patrick.
Patrick, this is Tina, thank you. I, I appreciate that and I would, I would appreciate if that could be written into a, as a condition. And I, I, I do appreciate the, how you have taken the feedback thus far. I hope that the neighbors hear and see that and your willingness to, to, to work with them. I see that and I think, you know, I just, you know, want to have that additional opportunity. You know, if we, if we rewind back to the fall, I know, you know, I was thinking honestly of COVID, just in terms of getting together. The fall, the mail was kind of sticky. So, so notices may, may not have actually indeed gotten to mailboxes for, for all I know. But it, to me, that all of those pieces, you know, the applicant, Patrick, you did everything you were supposed to do. I'm not alleging that, that, you know, that you didn't. I, I just, I, you know, my, to my core, I want to make sure neighbors feel like they're heard. And that's sort of where I'm coming from. So if we could write that in, that, if that's able to be added in, Diane or Sarah, and, and Patrick is agreeable to that, I, I would feel good about that. I, I know there's probably a motion that needs to be put in there, so I'll defer to the chair and Diane.
So I, I will like, would like to mention, I was double checking the application. There's no need for a zoning condition because the, in looking closely, the neighborhood meeting letter only had the rezoning box checked. What Sarah was seeing was the agent authorization form, which did include both rezoning and subdivision. So it will be a requirement of the ordinance for another neighborhood meeting to be held.
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Amanda.
This is Reggie. This is Reggie. So it sounds like we've gotten the neighborhood meeting settled. Let's go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve as written with the outstanding stipulations to have the additional meeting. The gravel construction road, et cetera, that Sarah discussed.
So, yeah, so, so your motion is as presented with the, with the five or six, six conditions that the applicant has presented, which include the reduction in home, construction traffic, slab on grade, and just custom home builders. Before we, Reggie, I, I'll hold your motion. I have one, one additional question. I just wanted to run by Sarah and staff. So the fifth one was adding the pedestrian walkway to Roberts Road using the eight-foot side path, unless there was a street that was within 300 feet of the northwest corner. So I guess, Sarah, that was one of the reasons you guys were against this amendment or against this rezoning. But can you explain why the side path does not work getting out to Roberts Road? And/or if the, this other part of the condition with, if there's a road within 300 feet? Or sorry, is staff still opposing this rezoning based on that or is that condition adequate now?
Yes, this is Sarah Van Everie. So what is being requested in the PUD is relief from U D O requirement, which would require that there is an internal connection from the subdivision to Roberts Road because it is a thorough fair. So because there is no direct access in the existing conditions as presented to Roberts Road, it's presumed that what we will see here is a cul-de-sac. And per the U D O, cul-de-sacs are to be avoided except when not practical, such as stream crossings, for example. So, you know, at, at this point, we're looking at, at land use and at the rezoning and not the subdivision layout. So based on what we're led to believe is it's quite possible that there's going to be cul-de-sac or cul-de-sacs in this area. And therefore pedestrians would have to, would use the sidewalk on those internal streets out to the side, the eight-foot side path on the north side of Pollard Place to connect to this existing side path to get back out to Roberts Road, increasing their travel distance a quarter mile or more. So the applicant had added and revised the condition that if there's not a road within 300 feet of this point here, that then they would provide that pedestrian connection. So because as written, it does not comply with the U D O, staff is unable to support the overall request. We, we support the, the overall PUD with the exception of, of that condition.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Sarah. I just wanted to go over that because I know that was initially a, a point that did not meet the U D Os. Okay. But I, you know, just from a comment, I still, you know, the side path is there. And, you know, I guess we will see it master subdivision plan if there's a street within 300 feet, which more than likely there probably would be. But, so that's just my comment at the moment. But, so back to, so Reggie does have a motion to approve the rezoning with the six conditions as presented by the applicant. Do I have a second or any further discussion?
Braswell, my second.
All right. So Keith Braswell's second. Any other comments or discussion before we vote?
Chairman, I was just going to say that notwithstanding the rather rich offerings of conditions in addition to the other five that the applicant came to the table with, I'd like to relay that the affordable housing contribution, the payment at lieu for replantings, the rather robust elevations that they presented, the custom home builder still present or providing 24, 5% RCA. I think that there's a lot of merits in what this applicant, being a family, they're looking out for their own land. I think, you know, they're doing a great job here. So I would like to support the second made by Chair, Board Member Braswell. And I will be voting in favor of this.
Okay, thanks for those extra comments. So, yeah, you're correct, they did, you know, in lieu, they did add a lot of other things that they didn't have to. So thanks for those comments, Ryan. So with that, we will do a roll call vote on the rezoning. So this is Michael Marks, I vote yes. Reggie Skinner?
Yes.
Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina Sherman?
Yes.
Tommy Pate?
Yes.
Tim Royal?
Yes.
Keith Braswell?
Yes.
Ryan Akers?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to.
Mr. Chairman, this is Diane, I apologize. We had somebody that was having difficulty finding the live stream link and so we're helping them. And so I heard in the motion that there were six conditions. I have the five that Sarah read into the record tonight. What was the sixth one?
Patrick said that whether it needs to be a condition, that he would definitely have a master subdivision plan neighborhood meeting. If, because there was doubt that, I think, I don't think it was combined with the other one, but just he made it that it would be included, definitely included. So if we want to add that as a sixth condition, that there would be a neighborhood meeting at master plan.
Okay, the last I heard it wasn't needed as a condition, but if he offered it anyway, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving to item number three. This was the board discussion, possible motion regarding rezoning case 20 CZ 13. The Yumari, I can't say that, Yumi Wari Farm Assembly. So Sarah, if you want to just do a quick summary and then any comments?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Marks. This is rezoning case 20 CZ 13. We are talking about the subject properties here on the south side of Hume Olive Road. And we have received one additional public comment since our meeting on Monday. And I'll go ahead and read that into the record. It is from Tal and Sherry Holloway at 8724 Hume Olive Road, Apex, North Carolina 27502. My comments regarding the planned project deal with the public access points for this project. Our driveway for 8724 and 8720 is a shared driveway with limited site distance. Putting a public access point near this driveway would greatly limit our ability to enter and exit when the project is complete. Due to the driveway easement, there are no other options to relocate our driveway. I'd like this comment addressed and entered into the project records. And that concludes any additional comment we've received.
Okay. Sarah, I saw that email and I did not have a chance to pull that up. And where is that driveway? Do you know where that is on the map that you have on the screen right now?
Yes, I believe, looked at it before, I mean, I believe it comes right in through here.
Okay.
See if I can pull up a better aerial.
Sarah, this is Jeff Roach, the applicant for the project. That is correct. It's right about where the fence line is, right about there. That's correct.
And Mr. Roach, where was one of the exits into the road going to be?
It's actually just a little bit east of that.
Okay.
And I, I was coordinating with Sarah earlier today about possibly an additional zoning condition at council to try to better align our drive, our street access with their driveway as best we can. It may not be perfect, but we're, we're going to work with staff to, to address the comment. Sorry for jumping ahead there, guys, I apologize.
No, thank, thank you, Mr. Roach. I think, yeah, that, seeing the comment and you guys will work with them, I'm sure we'll come to some equitable solution. Okay. So with that being the only comment, I guess we'll bring it back to the board for any discussion. So with that being the only comment, I guess we'll bring it back to the board for any discussions or a possible motion.
This is Reggie. I'm glad to hear that we can get that comment addressed because that would not be good. Yeah.
Chairman, I, you know, this is basically following suit to HELOC, which went through very exhaustive reviews with both y'all before I joined the board and through council. And as a continuation and with many of the same proffers, I'd like to make a motion to approve this rezoning case 20 CZ 13 with the conditions listed in the staff report.
So I have a motion from Ryan Akers to approve. Do I have a second?
This is Mark.
Okay, Tim, we have a second by Tim Royal. Any comments or discussion before we vote?
I think, Tim Royal again, I think it's pretty straightforward what's happening here. I mean, yeah, HELOC is going to completely surround this horse farm. And I can only imagine what's everybody's homes backed up to this property wants to do. So I think it's kind of the best of the situation.
Okay, thanks, Tim. With that, we will do another roll call. This is Michael Marks. I vote yes. Reggie Skinner?
Yes.
Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina Sherman?
Yes.
Tommy Pate?
Yes.
Tim Royal?
Yes.
Keith Bradwell?
Yes.
And Ryan Akers?
Yes.
The motion to approve the rezoning case 20 CZ 13 passes unanimously. Moving on to item number four that Lauren is gonna go over. So this is possible motion and board discussion regarding case 20 CZ 15, the Smithfield Road Collision Collision Center on Highway 55. So Lauren, were there, first, I guess, you want to just maybe summarize and then any comments that were received?
Sure, yes, sir. So just for the folks listening in on the live stream, and we're on slide 45 of the aerial for 20 CZ 15. This is a rezoning from high, from high density and in the rural residential, and it's to be proposed as light industrial conditional zoning. There's about 62 light industrial uses, mostly a few catered to repair service, limited automotive accessory sales, installation, repair and maintenance, manufacturing and processing. They did include three architectural conditions that we typically see for non-residential with a slight tweak to their proposed concept plan for the minor site plan. And then the fourth condition is a 100 repairing, 100-foot repairing buffer shall be provided for all perennial streams in accordance with the requirements of UDO Section 6.1 as of November 2nd, 2020. And, Mr. Marks, we did not receive any public comments for this or voicemails.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. So I'll bring it to the board for discussion and possible motion.
This is Mark. I think this one is about as straightforward as we ever see. And I would make a motion that we approve it as presented in the staff report.
I have a motion from Mark Steele and a second from Reggie Steele. Any comments?
Hey cousin, cousin Reggie.
My only, my only comment on this one would be what else could go here?
I think it's a perfect use and it's, I think it'll be a nice little, as the people come off the 540, they'll see a little collision center right there. And I think it'll be a great addition. And they'll help with the tax base. So, and I apologize, Reggie, for making you Mark's brother. Reggie Skinner's had a second. And with that, we will do the roll call. So this, Michael Marks votes yes. Reggie Skinner?
Yes.
Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina Sherman?
Yes.
Tommy Pate?
Yes.
Tim Royal?
Yes.
Keith Bradwell?
Yes.
And Ryan Akers?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to for rezoning case 20 CZ 15, the Smithfield Road Collision Center passes unanimously. Now we will move to item number one, and hopefully Shannon is on the call.
I am here. Thanks for switching the order for me.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Cox. So this is a board discussion and possible motion regarding the Town of Apex Affordable Housing Plan. So I guess Shannon, if you want to, I don't think you need to summarize. You did a great job and have done great work with this overall plan, including Mark Steele on the board. It's been helping out. Were there any additional comments received from the public?
There were no official comments to read into the public record as part of the public hearing. But out of transparency, because we do have a comment form that we're leaving open through the town council public hearings, I would like to summarize a couple of additional comments received through that form. Those were mainly, I would say geared toward implementation of the Affordable Housing Plan relating to looking at the accessory dwelling unit recommendation, particularly as well as working regionally. And then finally, there was a comment regarding looking at densities and how that would be implemented downtown in particular. So just paraphrase, paraphrasing those comments, we will be summarizing them in the town council staff report as well. But I characterize them as implementation type comments.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. All right, hearing no other public comments, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and possible motion.
It's Mark. Since I was on the steering committee, I think I probably should make a motion that we, that we support, send our support to the town council for this Affordable Housing Plan as it was presented Monday.
Okay, I have a motion for Mark Steele to approve. Do I have a second?
Before we get a second, Chairman, and Mr. Steele, because you were on that committee, I would like to echo some of the concerns we heard at the public, were there at least three comments at the end that came from industry leaders and stakeholders that might not have been participative in the, the original stakeholder group that you, Mr. Steele, were part of? I know Jacob Rogers with the Triangle Community Coalition, a group that I was the former chair of, was, was involved. But I heard three people discuss about the implementation of the zoning component of the housing affordability, or I'm sorry, the Affordable Housing Plan. And I just want, I was emailing with Ms. Cox earlier. I would like to see a condition go to council that there's a stronger effort to include the house, the Home Builders Association and some other industry leaders that do this for a living that attract, you know, market rate lower, probably 80% AMI, and see if we can get those types of products into Apex. I think that, you know, the DHICs of the world, that they're going deep into affordable housing, but through density and some, some other processes and, and policy, I think we can get what the town wants and needs. So I'd like to, I'm in favor of this document. Don't get me wrong. I just would like to see that other groups be included in the policy drafting portion of this. And I'd like that to be part of our recommendation if we, if we recommend it for approval tonight.
Yeah, I, can I respond to that, Chair?
Yes.
So to summarize nine months of work off and on, and most of it by the staff, not us, the steering committee, there, as you can imagine, it's a real balancing act between taking industry input and then many, many, many other voices. So the steering committee worked really hard, and I can vouch for it tonight to you guys, that they really listened to the industry input, but then they also listened to many other inputs. And they're, as you can imagine, not in agreement. And the industry would like certain things, but then other voices want other things. So what the steering committee and the staff and the consultants really did was try to blend all those. And what you see before you is the blending of all that, trying to weigh all that together. I do absolutely agree, Ryan, that in the implementation phase, after we hire a manager, that he or she is going to have to work with the industry, not do what they say, but is going to have to make sure somebody's willing to build this, right? So, and I think that's probably where your intent is going. I know you, listening to your comments, you know, in other meetings, that your heart's in the right place. You want it to be done, but you want to make sure somebody's actually going to spend the time and money to do a development. So I hear you. But I don't think we need to have any condition on this. I think that's going to happen naturally. Maybe Shannon wants to add a comment.
Sure, I appreciate the opportunity. And yes, I'm appreciative that we've heard from industry leaders as part of this process. That's the purpose of the process that we've established. And we will be responsive to the requests to be involved as part of the development of the incentive zoning condition policy. And I do feel proud of the process that we had as part of the development of the Affordable Housing Plan and the work of our steering committee, which was very committed. But, but we'll always be responsive to the type of requests to be involved in development of, of policy while balancing those different voices. So I agree, we'll take that feedback to heart, and we will work with it as we, as we continue to work on implementation of the draft plan.
Thank you, Shannon. Ryan, is that okay for you? Or do you still want to, you know, have a statement to town council?
No, I, I think staff understands and given what I just said, I believe that the town will reach out to these other groups as we get into the, you know, the drafting policy that we actually will look to as rezonings come forward to this, to this board. So again, I'm elated with the documents. It's been a long time coming. We all need it in Apex. So, so, so thank you, Shannon, and the rest of the staff that have been working on this and the steering committee, Mr. Steele, obviously you guys have put a lot of time and effort in. So thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Can I just, Mr. Akers, some of the other language that we discussed via email, did you want me to, to bring that forward at this point or not?
It's up to you. I was happy with, with the change.
Oh, okay. Well, I haven't shared the change with the planning board. So we do need to share that. I wasn't sure if you intended to bring that up, but I can share my screen if...
Yeah, I would. Okay, I would. Thank you.
Okay, and so I'll just review the, Mr. Akers had emailed related to those comments that, that were shared during the public hearing. And we discussed some potential changes to help address those comments. We've reviewed those as staff as well as with our expert consultant. And as staff, we can support these suggestions. So for the benefit of the public who cannot see my screen, I'll just share that there's a couple of changes to the first sentence. It now says under the Affordable Housing Incentive Zoning Recommendation, when proposed development requires town council approval, the town has an opportunity to encourage new development to include affordable housing units. Previously, that said insure. We've also clarified in the second sentence, incentive zoning conditions are intended to prompt and help developers provide a public good such as affordable housing units. And the last sentence of that paragraph has been added, such incentive zoning conditions are proffered by the developer and cannot be imposed by the town council. On the graphic on that page, where there's a scale, it says increased density and reduced parking requirements. In response to those comments received, we've added, just clarifying that those are examples of different types of incentives. And then on the same page, under recommendations for Apex, we just shortened the sentence instead of repeating what's at the top, which included that insure language. Now it just says the town should establish a clear policy to provide incentives for developers in exchange for affordable housing units or an equivalent fee payment toward the town's housing trust fund. No other changes have been made, have been made. And we will post this version if the planning board recommends this version on the Affordable Housing Plan website so that it's available before the town council public hearing.
Hi, Shannon. This is Tina. I actually have to admit, I'm a little caught off guard reading this now. And I'm not sure how I'm feeling about the, the new additions. Again, with the steering committee taking time to carefully craft, I'm not sure where I sit with the, with approving the, the new, the new changes.
This is Mark. I agree with you, Tina. It's a surprise. Yes.
Having insure to encourage, those are two different meanings to me. And I, I'm gonna defer mark, but I assume that careful consideration was put into the intention of the words. And I, I, I am caught, caught off guard and am not okay approving this document as presented.
Yeah, I, I just say, I would say that the steering committee is kind of done. So there's no opportunity. But I, I don't think the steering committee would agree with this. And so I have to ask a question to staff, really, I guess, to Shannon. Is it illegal for us to impose these? Is that why Ryan recommended changing that last sentence on the first paragraph? Or is it because Ryan, you think that, well, I'm asking Sharon, but is it because Ryan thinks that we'll get better cooperation from developers if we make it non-imposed? So what do you think? What's the legal, what's the legal status?
So this is Diane. I will answer that. So all zoning conditions have to be proffered by the developer. The town council cannot impose any conditions that are not expressly agreed to by the applicant. The town council's recourse is to turn down any rezoning they feel is not in the best interest of the town for whatever reason. So that's, it's, it's true regardless of whether that sentence is in this document or not.
All right. So that, my, my question was, does it weaken it? And you're saying it doesn't weaken the document?
I would actually say it does weaken the document too explicitly stated. I might word that a bit differently. So I'm, I'm gonna go back to, I'm not comfortable. This is incredibly upsetting, the changes, again, being caught off guard. If this was presented on Monday, that would have been different. We could have had a full discussion about it. But I was comfortable with the document as is. I think it's incredibly important. I, you know, I cannot tell you how many times, you know, you could go to the record, how many times I have said we really need a plan. I was really looking forward to voting this plan, voting for the plan as presented on Monday. I'm not comfortable with these changes.
And you can make a motion to that effect if you would like, that you recommend approval of what was presented on Monday.
Okay, thank you, Diane.
Actually, that's the motion I made. The motion I made was to approve what was presented on Monday. So I'm gonna ask the chair to decide whether he wants to call a vote on that motion. And if it doesn't pass, then go to a motion to approve what's here tonight.
Well, at this moment, we only have a motion. We don't have a second.
Okay.
At this point, I will second.
Okay.
There you go.
So, so let's have the discussion before we vote.
Yeah.
Should any of this language be, I mean, it doesn't have to be a condition. It could have just, I mean, if, do we just approve as presented on Monday, the document where it was done, we remove all the red line, but we put some of this comment for council that, you know, Brian had some input that he wanted to do, or we just let it go as, as is and vote on the, the plan as, as presented on Monday. So...
This is Reggie. I would think that we, as the town already stated, they can't insure, which is why the wording was changed, makes pretty good sense. We wouldn't have a leg to stand on.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing, Reggie, is that there were, the consultants, they have legal backgrounds and, and staff. And, and so this, this document, the last time I saw it, what had been thoroughly vetted and reviewed. So I guess the question Shannon was, did we miss something? Did, did, did the whole process miss something that we were stating it in a way that was unenforceable? Is that the problem?
So I don't think that we missed anything. I think when there's, you know, words that can be interpreted differently by different readers. And the consultant indicated that the use of insure was to make sure that we're working to get affordable housing units as part of... as part of the zoning process. It was not to require that of, you know, the zoning process. But it identified that that's an opportunity for the town as part of zoning. So no, I don't think that there's anything that was missed. And I think that this is not unusual through the public hearing process to receive additional comments and need to deal with them. Which, you know, this is one possibility. And if the planning board chooses to keep it as it was on Monday, that was also something we were comfortable presenting to you. In either case, I'll summarize the feedback as part of the overall public engagement process when this goes to town council.
Got it. That was, I was gonna ask that question. So if we vote on my motion, seconded by Tina, and it passes tonight, the town council will still hear Member Akers' concerns?
Yes, so it would be similar in format to how we provided public feedback to the planning board. I will add to that staff report, comments received. Any official comments to be read into the public record would come through the public hearing, you know, process.
Shannon, I'm so sorry, for clarification purposes, because I don't want this to be lost, what Member Akers has put forth. It will be incorporated into the, it will be incorporated into the public comment version that comes before the town council. Is that, or will it be incorporated? Again, assuming this passes, it will be, assuming Member Steele's motion passes, it will be incorporated as either public comment on the plan or as a part of the conversation before the planning board. Does that make sense? I'm just trying to understand or make sure that if Chairman, I'm sorry, if Mr. Steele's motion carries that these comments are captured and will be continued to be considered as a part of the discussion.
Right. Yes, so you were breaking up a little bit for me, but I believe that I understood the question. So, and I'm happy to take direction from planning board as far as how you'd like this to be conveyed. I would at a minimum include it in the staff report where we provide all of the public feedback that we've received for town council's consideration throughout this process. If you'd like me to have some further explanation with planning board's motion, you know, when we present that as part of the presentation and the body of the staff report, then please let me know that and I'm happy to do that as well.
This is Tina. I would be okay with either of those. And it might be a moot point here in a minute, depending on how the motion goes. I leave that to the board and Mr. Akers.
Can I, I just wanted to offer my perspective on why it is that I recommended these. And Ms. Sherman, believe me, I am a proponent of housing affordability. That was on my platform as chair of the TCC in 2019. The reason I would like to see some of these changes is because I see in the triangle, a lot of various implementations of housing affordability policy. And when I was chair of the TCC, we worked really closely with the city of Durham on their expanded housing choices. And in that, there was a lot more incentive placed on density and actually reducing the cost of the houses. And what I'm seeing and I'm reading in this document, particularly in this section, because on the rest of this document, there are so many other tools that are giving the town of Apex tools in the tool chest to achieve our metric. But what I'm seeing here is something that I feel is, when you use like a mandate type language, I'm starting to think inclusionary zoning. And the only way to get inclusionary zoning is to have exclusionary antics, which basically is saying you will do affordable housing and everybody else in the development that you're proposing is on the hook to pay for it. And it doesn't become a widespread apex problem, it becomes that person's problem. And I think you're gonna start seeing housing go in the wrong direction for those that aren't affordable. So I'd like to try to incentivize these builders, what can we do with density? And there's other practices, and I'm thankful for Ms. Cox adding in examples because there's a lot of tools in the zoning tool chest that you can use and other municipalities are doing it. So I appreciated some of the perspectives that we learned from the Home Builders Association and other land use attorneys that have dealt with this. But it just started to feel a little bit like the language was geared towards that. And maybe council will agree that that's the way they would like to go, but that's an illegal, you can't do inclusionary zoning in North Carolina, it's against the law. So that's kind of where I was coming from. But I think that this document as a whole, I wouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. These are just some of the changes that I wanted to, and others, I'm not speaking for myself. I mean, there's a lot of comments that came out on this regard, but that was my perspective and take that for what it's worth.
I 100% agree with Ryan. He should be encouraged, he's not required. I think we'll get a lot further with it and the realities of the inclusionary zoning.
So this is Tina. Mr. Akers, I really appreciate your comments and I appreciate your commitment to affordable housing, both here and in your previous role. My concern, I'm not gonna get into the nuance of mandate, not. I think that, you know, that was for the steering committee, it's for the staff. It is definitely a part of this conversation, but for right now, my main concern is that this was not the document that was presented, that the steering committee very carefully came up with. And in that vein of not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, I would feel much more comfortable sitting with the document that a diverse group of stakeholders came together to develop and then continue to work some of the nuance out with policy, which will continue to happen. And definitely encourage all of the stakeholders to come back as a part of that. But my concern is that the stakeholders put together this very carefully crafted, I'm assuming, Mr. Steele, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but very intentionally explicit language. And I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I was, I appreciate that, Tina. I agree with everything you said, which is really about the intent and the content. But my biggest objection to making a change here on Wednesday night is a process objection. So, and it dovetails with what Tina just said. So nine months of effort, lots of voices, lots of stakeholders, lots of surveys and talks, and we talked about this on Monday, paid consultants that do this for a living, the staff, Shannon's time, other people's time. So I don't support making a late, you know, 11:59 PM change. So what I, I don't think I need to change my motion based on what Shannon said. But what I, I'm not changing my motion. I'd like to have it voted on. But what I think we should do is we should say, I would hopefully say, we all support affordable housing. We support the result of this almost year-long effort and we support this document. And that one member, or maybe two, I've heard two, maybe three, we'll see, that some members of the planning board felt that we may need to reword the first page or this page in order to comply with state law. I would be surprised that that was actually true. I think what I'm worried about, Ryan, is that because you have such a strong background here from a developer point of view, that it's almost like this balance beam we're looking at here, it's almost like we just dropped a 20-pound weight on the right side, boom, or the left side, whatever. And so I can tell from your comments, you think it is unbalanced and you're trying to balance it. But that's a process problem. So then if that's really true, the town council needs to know that. And then if the town council says, we really like Ryan's version better, great, now they know. If they say, no, we like the original version better, then that's, and if that's what we approve tonight, then great. So as long as they get to see both versions, so I'd like to keep my motion the way it is. We vote up or down on the Monday version. And if we don't, then let somebody else make a motion to approve this version. And whichever version goes to town council, I think they just need to hear the story. And I think Shannon already said she would tell them the story.
I would actually, and I kept silent on this, but just taking a look at this. In first reading it, there was a bit of ambiguity. And we didn't, I couldn't quite tell the intention, was it, if you were coming here to Apex to develop, you must do this, or is, or are these truly incentives? Because if you have to do it, it's not an incentive. And I think what Ryan has come up with provides more of a clear explanation as to what it is we're trying to do. They truly should be incentives. We're not saying this is what you have to do. We're saying this is what, if you want, if you want some changes here, you can go about, it's kind of hard to get what I'm trying to, basically, it's a whole lot more clear the way he has put it. And I think.
Full disclosure, it was staff that did that. I was just, I was just the one that said some words. They actually did this.
Well.
There could be a legal dance, the way it was previously written. And what you could get into is the intention gets missed.
Yeah, well, and also remember that this is a plan, this is not policy.
Clear response, you know, to this. I think it looks good.
Yeah, Chair Marx, I think, just said, this isn't policy, this is not a policy document. We were very explicit about it. And the other thing is, it is a little bit vague on purpose. And the word ensure in there, I think was in there on, was really there for a reason. Because, think about it, even though legally we can't force a specific developer to do it, if we don't do what we say in this plan, we will not ensure affordable housing in this town, period. So the ensure part wasn't to be for one developer, it was for the whole of the town. So if we weaken it too much, we won't ensure anything. We'll just have a piece of, we'll have a piece of paper saying we want to do good stuff and none of it's gonna happen. So that's my worry.
Well, so, but from what you just said there, it sounds like you're leaning towards developers must.
No, 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 that's illegal, right? It's, that's why the words were carefully chosen.
You're gonna get into.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From what I was just hearing, it sounds kind of like.
I just, I want to be upfront, that there was a lot of compromise and a lot of listening to each other. And then ultimately, it was up to the consultants and the staff to pick the words that we then reviewed and commented on and edited and voted on, and then they redid it and then we voted on it again. And this is, and so sometimes the sausage that comes out the other end isn't totally pretty. And you've picked it up, then you picked it up rightly. It wasn't crystal clear because we didn't want to make it, we didn't make it illegal for sure, but we also didn't want to make it too passive. And so I actually feel like the sentence, that's why I asked, cannot be imposed at town council, is really weakens it. It really almost takes the wind out of the sail. It's true, it's true.
You can encourage somebody or tell them they must do that.
I actually, I actually like the way Ryan, his comments cleared things up. And I actually would like to make the motion to accept it.
Out of order, though.
Yeah.
I would like to additionally add that, you know, again, going back to Mr. Steele, I want to reiterate that the careful, intentional thoughts, process that went behind this document. I don't know who else sitting on the board lives in affordable housing or has, works with folks who live in affordable housing. But there were a lot of, there was a, you know, the group, the steering committee that came together had all of those voices at the table. And I want to be particularly careful because of city and county ordinances that have been into place that have led to discrimination policies that have ultimately been put into place. And so I think that, you know, we have to be really careful because there was a diverse group that came together, the steering committee, to help do this along with the staff. And so much thought has been put into it. And to go in and to change words based on intentionality, I am fearful that the document will not be reflective of the intention that was put behind it. And I would also chair, I would love to, there's been a motion, a second, I would love to move to vote on the motion.
Thanks for wrapping it up, Tina. And I agree, just my quick comments, that there was a process, a lot of effort was gone into it. We had a chance to review, read the document before the meeting. There may be some, Ryan has some really good comments and his expertise is very valuable in this. But I trust that Shannon, a couple of things that can happen, the people who made the public comments on Wednesday, they have a chance to go before the town council and reiterate those. And I think some of these comments can be brought forward. I have a feeling that Shannon will bring them forward. But I'm, you know, I'm a process kind of person and the process that was there and put in place, I just hate at the 11th hour, as Mark, or 11:59, to come in and just say, well, yeah, all the work that everybody did was really good, but we want to wordsmith it just a little bit. I think we stay with the document as presented. And we have a motion and we have a second, so I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna do a roll call at this point. And we'll see where, if it doesn't pass, then we'll have further discussions and possible motion. But I'm gonna start the roll call now. So this is Michael Marx. I vote yes on the motion. Reggie Skinner?
I vote no. Can we get clarification on exactly what we're making?
Okay, I'll go back and reiterate.
Are we approving it with comments going to council or are we approving it just as is? I just want to make sure we know what we're.
Okay. So, Tim, so yeah, the motion was to approve as presented on Monday. And with Shannon will have additional comments that Ryan made will be shared in the staff packet that goes to council.
Thank you.
Okay. So Michael Marx voted yes. Reggie, I think you said no?
I said no, and the reason being, the points that Mr. Akers pointed out, you want to incentivize, you cannot mandate.
Okay. Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina Sherman?
Yes.
Tommy Pate?
No.
Tim Royal?
No.
Keith Braswell?
No.
And Ryan Akers?
I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but I gotta stick to the language on this one because we are all gonna be voting on a lot of cases and rezoning in the upcoming months and years. And if we change the language back to the way it was, I feel like there's gonna be a crossroads of what council wants for zoning and what is good for Apex. So I'd like to see it more of an encouragement and not a mandate, because I think the town will get a better product. So for that reason, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. So it's five noes to three, so the Mark's motion fails. So I'm gonna bring it back to the board for additional discussion and maybe a possible motion if there's anything else that wants to.
Chairman Mark, I've actually made a motion to approve as the way with the additional comment. I'm not sure if he has heard that motion from earlier.
Yeah, I sort of did, but since we had a motion on the tape. So, so Tim, you have a motion to approve the plan, the rewording of the plan on page. What page was that? Was it 22?
32.
32. So Tim Royal has a motion to approve the amended document with additional, or the wordsmithing to basically go where we are encouraging and not forcing to make the language maybe a little less forceful. So I have a motion to approve that.
This is Keith, a second.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I only have one question, it's Mark. Will our comments around these two different versions be? Yeah, I only have one question is Mark. Will our comments around these two different versions be presented to the town council?
I'll defer to Shannon. Or maybe this is for Diane to, does the first, the, the first motion fail? Does that get presented? And then the second motion that passed, does that get, um, obviously that does get presented, but does the first one that failed get presented?
The motion doesn't, but if you all would like to send the opposing comments, you can ask that to be a part of the planning board discussion. Otherwise Shannon already said she would include, you know, all, all the discussion.
What, what I'm concerned about, um, Chair and Diane is if it goes to the town council and they see these change. First, I want them to know that it was changed at the 11th hour. And I want them to know that it was changed after Monday's presentation and after the steering committee was done. So if we vote, as I fear we will vote five to three to approve this. Then I don't want the town council to be misled that this, that this is the result of, of nine months of work. This is not the result of nine months of work. It's a late hour change.
Echo.
Shannon, are you not on the call?
She, I see, I see her initials, but I don't hear.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you now. Are you able to summarize the discussion from tonight? It'll be on YouTube tomorrow so we can re-review it as well.
I, I feel very confident that I can summarize the discussion and with whatever, um, motion carries, I can present the dissenting opinion clearly.
Okay. And, and Mark, I mean, just, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm on the fence on this both ways. But, um, you know, if we would have been in, in chambers, we would have had people making public comments and we, it's possible that it would have got wordsmithed. There too. It's, there's no telling that, you know.
Sure.
We had, we had more time and so it does seem like it's coming at the 11th hour. But if we would have heard all that and it would have been very, you know, sure, somebody would have viewed it as that, it's almost. Requiring that to happen versus just encouraging, we might have changed, we might have added some wordsmithing at that point as well.
Yep. Well, just before you all vote, there, we had explicit discussions about how far could we go? And we made a decision not to mandate. This is not a mandate. This document does, is not a mandate and we, we knew we couldn't do that legally. So we tried to find a middle ground. So, um, and go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm done.
I'm disappointed that we would, that we would change. I understand that it's not at the 11th hour. The, these could have surfaced, you know, we had an agenda. This is not, um, this is not from the public. This is from the board. This sort of surfaced on Monday. Um, I would have had an opportunity to fully look at, in fact, uh, you know, the exact opposite. If it would have been presented on Monday, I would have had full, be a full opportunity to then go back to, um, other folks, um, to examine, um, who, who worked on affordable housing. But, you know, in, in Wake County, in North Carolina and across the country, um, and, and that has not happened. This is not reflect the committees, um, the committee's recommendations. And, um, I see it as weakening the document as a whole. And, um, it, it, it appears the writing, uh, it appears the writing is on the wall. I'm incredibly disappointed.
Any further comments?
This is Reggie. I disagree. I feel like the three statements that were changed are incentivizing as opposed to trying to force someone to do something they don't want to do.
Yeah.
Incentivizing is a two-way street. What one views as incentivizing and what's what industry, and I, you know, I'm going to just, I'm just going to lay it, lay the line. What industry uses incentivizing is different than what the public and consumers can view as incentivizing. And those are very, very different. I'm not going to sit here and make a call on which is right and which is wrong and which, which has more weight and which doesn't. But there, the public and consumers versus industry and who views what as an incentive is very different.
If you put it in terms of working with your teenage child versus your elementary school child, you can mandate the elementary school child, that teenage child, they're going to give you some pushback. You have to do a little more incentivizing to get stuff done, correct?
Not necessarily, actually. That's a really great question. Not necessarily.
Me having six kids and then being adults, I've had to do that.
I will, I will give you, somebody actually asked me about, um, mask requirements for, for school age kids. And they asked me what happens when an elementary schooler gets, has to put on a mask and what happens to the middle schooler and what happens with the high schooler. And they came with, they came at the suggestion of the same argument. And my comment back was there are, um, uh, school dress codes. And guess what? Kids every morning have to get up and meet the school dress codes. Those are a mandate. If you ask a teenager to wear a mask because they have to enter the school and that's a school dress code, they will do it. If you leave it up for interpretation, that's a whole nother pile of wax, but they will do it. So, so you're right. You can, you can say that, um, I, I, I'm just, just flat out, industry versus consumer have two different. There are two different constituencies with two different demands and two different needs. And those were thought through and considered at the steering committee. They have not been fully presented here. This is a very industry focused, these are industry focused changes. And mandates or not, I'm not going to argue about whether right or wrong. But, um, but, um, what industry would like mandated and what consumers would like dated are completely different. That is true at the city council level. That is true at the county level, is true at the state level, is true at the federal level. And I can come back with all sorts of different ways that, that voluntary works and it doesn't work.
Tina, this is Tim Royal. Uh, I think, you know, we can kind of go down a rabbit hole and, and come up with many different examples of how things could work or things could not work. But I think in the very end, we do need to incentivize and not to people that they have to. Apex should not be saying that this, this is what you're going to do if you're going to develop in our town and here's how we're going to do it. So we want to incentivize, uh, the, the generosity of these people who are portrayed as bad, evil people in our society as illegal developers.
Mr. Royal, I do not
incentivize these people to do what's right. And I think it's a free market. Apex needs to remain a free market. To incentivize them to do it. And I think this document, when you, when you have such ambiguity in there, and I'm glad that Ryan didn't catch that. And it may have just been missed, but actually at the same time, Mark had mentioned, well, we were trying to kind of be on the fence. I kind of want to tell you, you have to do it, but I kind of can't tell you, you have to do it. I don't, that's right.
Yeah, let, let me, let me, you paraphrase close, but no, no cigar. So the, there, and this is, this is before you guys take this next vote, I just want you to think about this is that there were probably 50 people involved in this. And paid experts, the town paid, I'm, I don't even know what they paid, but Shannon can tell it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars for these experts that this is all they do. And we, and they had legal help and the town had legal help. And we were trying to hear developers who wanted everything to be laissez faire. And we heard, um, real advocates, real advocates for affordable housing that wanted things to be, you know, money to taxes to be raised to pay for things. And we didn't do that. And so, um, and so what you see in this document, and I hope to God, all of you have read it all. It's, it's a very complicated document. And, uh, and again, it's not policy. It's, it's a path forward to create policy. And so really what I am really disappointed in is that the rest of you are saying that you're willing to take the work of 50 plus people and paid consultants and staff, many, many hours and throw it out. Because you don't, you think it's not weighted enough to the side of the developers. So that's okay. That's why we have a planning board and we're all different. We all have different life experiences and we have different roles here. So I respect
So let's be clear about that. I'm not saying I'm in favor of trying to, like you said, put a 20 pound weight on the other side to help the developer. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you should not be told that that's what you have to do.
No, but we're not, but, but let me just say
incentives worth their risk. These people are risking all the money, the town's not. These people are risking their money to make sure that they can get profit on the backside too.
Yeah, but remember it's, it's a three-way thing. But Tim, remember, one of the, and Chair Marks, you can help educate us on this. It's, we're always walking a tightrope balance between the interest of the, of the, of the property owner, the interest of the town, in the interest of those who are affected by the development. And so the reason we need an affordable housing plan, and I think, I think you all support that, which is great. Is that because we've had all these dozens of things come before the planning board and then town council where there's no real guidance. So, and so this gives us guidance and it will result in some policies being made, which will be very tough choices. But that, I just want to make sure before you gavel us to vote, um, that by voting yes on this second motion. You're saying you don't think that the many, many people in the hundreds and thousands of hours that was spent on creating this document were.
That's incorrect. I'm not making a vote to say that what they have done has been in vain and that they have wasted their time and our town has wasted money. So please don't think or say that that is what I'm voting on. That's not the case.
I'm not voting on that either. So what I'm saying
clarity, because that, I would love clarity because that, I, I, this is Tina, I will say that is, that is what it sounds like.
Okay. So to be clear, what, what Ryan said, and Ryan, keep me honest here is other towns in the area that you've worked with hadn't got it right. You worked very closely with Durham, who did some incentivizing. And that's what you're encouraging us to do here. Is that not what we heard?
That is correct.
Okay. So if other towns in the Wake County area didn't get it right, we have a chance to by changing some words to say entice and encourage as opposed to mandate. I don't see why we're not achieving the goal we want of affordable housing.
Then I would love to, if, if, if the, um, if this does not accurately, this document does not accurately reflect, um, best practices. Which was not my impression. Um, that's what I'm hearing from Ryan. Um, if, um, if this does not accurately reflect best practices, I would love to see it go back. And let's involve Durham and other communities, um, that are putting, are implementing better. Because if we, it, it sounds like we missed something and if we miss something, then we, we, we need to go back and make sure it's included in again, with all the voices. Because industry weighing in is not all the voices. Because I, I, I work very, I work with folks very closely in Durham and they have a different perspective on affordable housing, um, in Durham. And the industry's perspective and the real lived person's perspective is very different. So I, I, I don't entirely agree with that. Um, but again, I'm going back to if we miss something, I am all about including it. And adding it, maybe we need to go back and revisit the document, but I, it, it, it sounds, it, it feels like to me, we are changing based on industry input on what is working in Durham. Please correct me if I misunderstood.
I don't think there's so much here. Um, first, this is page 32 of a, what, 80-page document, which I think is fantastic. In my opinion, we need this so bad in Durham or in Apex. We, we don't have anything right now and, and right now the cost of land is the highest in the triangle with maybe carry being just slightly edging us out. And with land the way it is, all the regulations that are coming, and you heard all the proffers on the zoning conditions that we heard tonight, like we're going in a different direction. And so if, if you encourage the language on page 32 to say, you know, ensure to what level are we going this direction and keep going that direction to get this much of a proffer because it's so expensive? I think the encouragement, in my opinion, is to go dense, to, to, to start relaxing some of these proffers to get more affordable units. I, I think, you know, to, to Ms. Sherman, your point Durham, I'm, I've got cases right now that I'm rezoning where I've got councils saying, how dense can you go? What can we strip out? What's the lowest price point we can get on these townhomes? I haven't heard that come out of this council and I'm not saying that's what Apex needs to do. We're not Durham. But I'm just saying encouragement has different connotation than ensure. And, and, and I'm not saying, you know, we need to, listen, if you guys want to vote the other way, I could be swayed. I just think, you know, I work with these people that build this product and there's a way to do it and you can get a lower price point. And that's what Apex needs. We need more workforce housing. Um, it, it's a deficit. So, you know, this is where my heart's at and, and, and I'm, I'm swayed either way, but, uh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not. Go ahead.
You work with folks who, who, who develop their property. I, I work with many folks who, um, who are, would be living in, in these properties. I, I, I hear you. I, it is, I think that this point is, is well, I, I think that there's lots of room for conversation on both sides of this. Um, I, I wouldn't, I'm going to go back to that original motion. I'm, I'm, if, if you are swayed either way, I would encourage you to submit these, to, to withdraw the motion. I actually don't know who had the motion, but the motion be withdrawn, that the document go as is and this very spirited conversation continue with town council. With their understanding that the document came as a whole with all diverse opinions, not just someone, not just an individual or group coming with an industry perspective. That, 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 if, if, if you, if you, if you're, if you are, you're swayed on both sides, that's what I would encourage. I think there's, there's much, much more discussion about this. I'm very, I'm so proud. I'm so excited that we have this. This is something, again, I have been wanting. Um, and have said to almost everyone that we need to have this. And, um, I, I'm very curious about what you're, what you're hearing in Durham because I am hearing something else. And so I think there's room for more discussion and want to have more kind of discussion that, that's, that we can't have right here.
Does it make sense then that we make a vote tonight? Can we, can we push it out a month and get some more input? Or is that, is that, and, and again, I don't want to, um, play down what the steering committee and, and Chair, um, board member, um, Steele is, has done with the rest of the group. You guys have put in a lot of effort and like I said, one page out of 83, this document's fantastic. Does it make sense to pump the brakes? Are we, are we going too fast or I, I don't know, because we do need a document. So maybe.
Now, I, I would not recommend that, Ryan. I, I feel like you're, 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 you're listening and I really appreciate it. And all of you that voted no on the first minute of motion, I really respect and I've listened to what you've said and I, I, I think Tina's listened also. It, it doesn't really matter at this point. Um, as long as the town council, uh, if, if, if your motion carries. Then I, I will be okay as long as the town council knows. I, I've already drafted an email to, to Mayor Gilbert, however it goes tonight. And I'm going to, I'm just doing this in full disclosure, is that I want to ensure firsthand, because he personally asked me to be on the steering committee. And I devoted a lot of time to it. And so that doesn't mean that I think what everything we did was perfect. I don't. And I listening and hearing all of what you guys are saying. So I agree with kind of what Tina just said. This is now, it's time to go to the town council. We shouldn't delay this. He needs to go and get done one way or the other. And so I, as I, I'm going to take it upon myself to let the mayor know that his requested representative to be on this feels that it's out of order, it's out of process to be done at the 11th hour, but that the comments that all of you have made need to be heard by the town council before they vote. That's all, I'm not, I'm not going to gripe. I'm not going to say, oh, they voted the wrong way. I'm just going to say, make sure you guys hear the whole story before you vote. That's, and I think that's consistent with our conversation tonight.
I echo that and would be happy to co-sign that letter.
All right. So, so we have a motion from Tim and a second from Keith to approve, um, the plan that was presented by Shannon today. With the red line documents on page 32, um, not really red line, but red line comments. And, um, so I think we will just, um, it's time for a vote. So, yes.
Um, could I, um, based on, um, Brian's previous comment, um, can I ask if, um, Mr. Royal would be willing to withdraw his motion?
Yeah, that's, that's open to, yeah, you can ask Tim.
Uh, thanks, thanks for asking Tina. I think just kind of like as, as Mark has mentioned, I think the town's ready to see something on their desk to, to get it going. Again, we're, we're in a, we're an advisory board, right? What we say What we say and what they do can be two different things. The, the council can decide to change it and they can revote on it as well. But I think, I don't think at this point it's gonna be advantageous. I think they're gonna be fully aware of the conversation amongst all of us here and they're gonna take that with, uh, with much consideration, uh, and, and moving it forward. I think at this point, this could only delay the entire process from what they want to see. This, again, could change once it gets to council. Uh, this is just, this, this is what we're just going to advise.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna do roll calls. So this is Michael Marx and I am going to vote no on the motion. And it's, it's purely process related. There was too much work put in this to change the document at the, um, after just some comments from one side without the whole, um, planning board or the, um, steering committee that did all this work. So my vote is no. Reggie Skinner?
I'm voting yes to the changes of the red text document because it is incentivizing.
All right. Uh, Mark Steele?
No.
Tina Sherman?
No, and I echo the, um, this is on process, not on the substance.
Okay. Uh, Tommy Pate?
Uh, I vote no and just for everybody, I, I would vote no either way. I don't, I don't really support this document myself, so I'm no on both of those.
Okay. Tim Royal?
Yes.
Keith Braswell?
Yes.
And Ryan Akers?
Yes.
All right, so we have a four to four tie. So I'm, um, Diane, what's our, does it go as a, um, a four to four vote and no agreement?
Yeah, it's a, it, it goes forward and the nos who expressed the reasons why they said no, that'll be included.
Okay. All right. And just a quick, so I, I, you know, I, that's why I like this board. We've got a lot of diverse opinions and comments and I think we try to do the best thing for Apex and we come at it from different angles. And this is, I, you know, the overall plan, I think everybody agrees is needed and should, should move forward. There, is there a little wordsmithing? Yes, but this is a plan, not policy. So when we hire a, um, a housing, um, director and he has time to work with everybody and policy gets set and we have a chance to vote on policy, I think we can fine tune it a little bit farther. But I think this is, you know, you know, I, I think everybody agrees, we're not, you know, we don't disagree with the plan. We disagree with some of the, the actual verbiage. And, um, so. So Diane, do you have the reasons for all the, uh, four nos?
Mr. Pate said he was opposed to the plan. Um, Mr. Marx and Ms. Sherman said that they were opposed due to process. Um, and then, um, Mark Steele, I'm not sure, he's articulated it throughout. I'm not sure he said it after his vote, but I think it's maybe both content and process. Is that correct, Mr. Steele?
Yeah, it's primarily process and that it devalues the time and effort that the steering committee, the consultants and the staff have put into it to make a late, late minute change. And that as long as the council's aware, and I think a four-four vote is actually a great outcome, given that we all have different opinions on, I think it's great. Because the town council will know that this is complicated. They need to pay some detail attention to these little details. I think this is a good outcome based on tonight's discussion.
And it was a good discussion.
Badly. Yeah, this is great. I, I, I'm really looking forward to future cases where we can implement a lot of this stuff and actually see some, some movement towards getting the housing affordability crisis addressed in Apex, because God knows we need it.
Yes, we do.
All right, well, that completes, um, the secondary meeting to, uh, vote on all the public hearings. So other than, uh, um, a motion for adjournment, um, that's all we need.
Uh, Mr. Marx, oh, I did, I did want to mention one thing, just for anyone that's listening. Um, the town council meeting on the 26th will be done remotely. Um, you may have seen on Facebook, town hall's going to be closed at, through the end of the month. So just wanted to mention that.
I, so I had, I think before you got on the call, just to, um, so our meeting is on the 8th. Do you think we'll be in chambers or we won't know until later in the, the month? And what's the deadline before you, you have to make a call, whether it's a remote meeting versus in-person?
It's not my call. It's town council's call. So, um, you know, it's, it's about two weeks out is what they've been doing. So I, I would expect that we would know in time to be able to do the legal notices properly.
Okay.
But I do not know if the meeting in February will be remote or not.
Okay, so planning board, we will, we will know when council makes a, and they, you think they will decide at the 20, the meeting on the 26th?
Um, they've been deciding outside of meetings. It's, so I, I, I can't say, I don't know.
All right. Check your emails, um, regularly and we will know whether we are in person, which I hope. But if, um, council chooses otherwise, we will, we'll do another teams meeting like we did this week. So, all right, so I had a motion from Reggie. Do I have a second?
Second. This is Tommy.
Second from Tommy. Um, Michael Marx votes yes. Reggie Skinner?
Yes.
Mark Steele?
Yes.
Tina Sherman?
Yes.
Tommy Pate?
Yes.
Tim Royal?
Yes.
Keith Braswell? Ryan Akers?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, I know these are a lot more difficult than in-person and I don't think we are, do, that's good a job of having the public in front of us, but you guys did great and I appreciate all the, um, the inputs. I think we had good discussions and, um, did the best we could for the town. So thank you very much. You guys have a good, good evening.
Chair, you're doing a great job in difficult circumstance.
All right, we'll see you guys.
Thank you all. Appreciate you guys.
Tina, stay on for a second if, if we can, if the call doesn't drop. I don't have your email. Tina? Tina, Tina? Tina's gone. All right.
I'll get you her, her email, Mark.
That'd be great.
Sorry, yeah.
That's okay. If you could, do you have mine?
Yes, I do.
All right. If you could send it to me, I'll include her on this email.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Bye.